Councilman Clush, can you give the C indication?
Yes, sir. I may probably thank you that we're able to gather here tonight, Lord. We thank you for the many blessings that you do with school upon St. Albans, Lord. Lord, we ask for your safety and your guidance, Lord. Help us make the right decisions that would be pleasing to you. In your name we pray.
All right, we've got troop one forty-six. Which, by the way, I was boy scouting that troop for a while. And Evan Kinley, he's working on his Eagle Scout project ribbon cutting effort. The Morgan's Kitchen will be September tenth, and that will complete his Eagle Scout goal. So, anyway, Evan, you want to list in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this meeting, I've said all the city councils order. For praise and recognition, I first want to talk about the fireworks that we had on Sunday evening. This was our fourth year, I believe, of it. And we go in with Nitro, and we split the calls, and they're fantastic. My son was out on his boat. He's doing much better than his dad does, and I promise you that. But he's like, why you guys show everybody else up on your fireworks? So, I want to thank Nitro, their staff. I want to thank St. Albans and their staff for everybody that was working it to make this a successful event. So, good job, St. Albans and Nitro. And that lets you know what happens when you work together, and good things do happen, so.
That's one brief, one a little longer, it's not really, it's a sad thing. First thing, I'd like to thank publicly, again, all the business owners who helped participate in the Pota event from Mount New Main Street. It was an overwhelming success for a first time out. We didn't have any hiccups, so I want to thank them publicly without their collaboration, if possible, and as well as LM Communications. And secondly, I just want to bring up briefly, we had a friend, I put it in the group message, passed away last Tuesday somewhat unexpectedly, and that was Justice Tim Armstead, former House Speaker. A lot of people don't realize this, back in the day, as John just talked about, in the old thirtieth district.
Thirty-second.
Well, he was in the thirtieth that had St. Albans in it. So, he actually represented the city of St. Albans for a while, and I just ask, we had our visitation of funerals going on right now, but to keep his family in your prayers, because this was rather unexpected. He had been battling leukemia for the last year. But he was at the Capitol the Wednesday before he passed away, and they just got done running. And by Thursday evening, he was flighted from Charleston to Reuben Memorial with an infection, and he was one of the good guys, truly good guys. And so, I just ask everyone to keep he and his family in a thought of prayers.
Thank you very much.
Scott, one other thing, too.
Yes, sir.
Last Saturday, we had a St. Albans homecoming, like an event at the roadside park. We had over three hundred and fifty people there, and it went very, very well. And Scott Tweedy and his group from the Parks and Recreation did a good job of keeping everything going on, but it was very successful, and heard a lot of good feedback about it.
Very good, yep, and I heard it was very good. I was up at my son's watching football, so I didn't make it over. But, you know, guys, we don't have direct interstate access, all right? So, we put on these events to bring people to St. Albans. When they come to St. Albans, they keep coming back, and it has grown our economy tremendously, and we're going to keep doing it, you know? I got a saying out there, it's happening outdoors, it's happening in St. Albans, West Virginia. So, anyway, great job by Parks and Rec, great job by the fireworks crew. Now, it is time to recognize, and I want to let everybody know, parents know, that I was contacted by the nine, ten-year-old All-Star girls to recognize him, and I put a message out with probably three to four, maybe five different people, said, let me know who is coaching the nine, ten, and eleven-year-old All-Star boys, so we can recognize him. So, tonight, state runners-up, in Little League, we're going to recognize him. Did you have something, Captain?
Yes, real quick, just before we recognize these All-Stars, we lost a very great man here in St. Albans, and he even coached some of these parents that are here tonight. So, Coach John Bowles, a dear friend of mine, you know, I coached with him, but also played with him, he did pass away, so please keep J.D. and the family in your prayers, because he was a great man, and he served on city council with us as well.
Yeah, he said between you and I.
Yes, he did, he was the road between the two corners. So, but no.
There ain't no doubt about that.
Yes, Coach was truly a legend, and we lost him, so.
Yep, John gave a lot to the community, there's no doubt about that. So, what I would like to do right now, yeah, let's scoot the tables back, and I call your names, kind of line up here in a V, all right? And I'll pass these out, all right? It's a certificate of appreciation for the coaches and the players. I'm very excited, I guess you all play at Kirkfield, right?
Yeah.
I played there back in the sixties, all right? That's how old I am, but we.
They had a dirt infield.
Huh, they had dirt infield, you're exactly right. And, you know, the turf infield that was done by city council has helped on eliminating rainouts and stuff like that, so, you know, we hope there's going to be more to come, but you got to have this right here to get things accomplished, there's no doubt about that. But, I want to bring up, first off, manager Rock Chandler. Congratulations, Rock, great job, man.
Right up over here.
Yes, sir. Coach Jeremy Maynor. All right, Coach Rodney Abbott. I wonder who's back there taking pictures back there, you know? So, and Coach Bran- Branson Grigsby. All right, players, Liam Workman. Congratulations, Liam, yes, sir, great job. Kayla Bridette.
Yes, sir.
Owen Wilburn. Oh, he did, big enough to hunt bear with a switch. Brody Parra or Para?
Par.
Congratulations, job well done. Cam Abbott. Congratulations, Cam. Harvey Knight. Congratulations. Harvey, you can start over here with the coaches, tell them to squeeze together, all right? Jack Grigsby. Congratulations, job well done. Brody Lane. Yeah, that is another big one, man, I can tell you what, I hope y'all play football. All right, Cameron Wallace. Congratulations, Cameron, job well done. Ridgely Maynor. Congratulations. Bronson Sands. Blake Chandler. Congratulations, Blake, job well done. All right, parents, come on up, get your pictures. Y'all come in a little bit here if you want. Look at the cameras. The moms have got to get the pictures. They're looking tough, mom, come on. All right, you're welcome, congratulations. And I believe baseball, softball future looks pretty good in St. Albans. Any other praise and recognition? So, you're saying the women were the glue that held everything together? We all know that, right? Yeah, that's very good. Thank you all. Any other praise and recognition? Right here, before you get out of line. All right, need approval, minute for city council, August eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Got a second? Questions, discussion, or changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Own business, direct the city attorney to prepare a resolution in order to move forward with the annexation of Sun Valley, Councilman Rucker.
Talking with Council Lefon, we were under the impression that this body will need to make a motion for council to create, for attorneys to create a resolution that will allow us to move forward with the annexation process of Sun Valley. So, with that, they will put together a resolution that will dictate the map. I have put the little map that you all see, just to give you an understanding of what it would be, it's the Sun Valley territory, and then, I'll give you one as well. And then Forest Brook, basically, the going behind Forest Brook, the line would come right down that, it would include the gas station, the storage facility, and then it would move over to basically Sun Valley, where you're leaving the railroad track. So, everything within that. In the annexation committee, just for a little bit of information for council, there was one road that was questioned by residents, and by that, I mean whether presented opposition, I should say. One gentleman spoke in general for Delray, but there were some other folks that lived on Delray that he was in opposition, the other folks were for it. With that, I went out and put a letter on anybody that is on Del- on Delray, and I left my contact information, phone number, and email address for anybody to reach out to me and share either support or opposition. What I reached back, or what I received back was two phone calls, one for and one against. So, right down the middle, I'm going to guess that it may have been the two individuals that were also at the meeting that day. But, so it wasn't one way or another, it was literally two responses to this point.
But, Delray, is that the backside?
It's on the very backside.
Yeah, that one guy does not want it, but I promise you one thing, when that hill slips or whatever, he's going to want it.
And, you know, I think that the way I'm looking at it, and everybody had asked, as I was walking around on Delray, there were three neighbors that I, three residents that I spoke to while I was out there, and their inquiry was, why are you all trying to annex? And the whole point that I gave to them was, we have been, it's requested by Sun Valley residents.
Yes.
It's not something that the city is pushing, it's the interest of the residents in that territory are seeking to be included in the city.
Yes, sir.
So, with that, I mean, it's not something that I would believe that the city's going to make money on, we're not going to benefit from this financially, we will probably lose as, I mean, our city service fees over the long run, the services now, it is important, I think, they are already on MUC water and sewage, so there's no change in the service for the water service or the sewage service, it would just be public works and upkeep that would be.
Trash fire police.
Yeah. Road conditions, things like that. So, with that, I do make a motion to pass to the attorneys to draft a resolution so that we can start the canvassing process.
I'll second that motion.
Questions or discussion?
How many houses is it on Delray?
On Delray, I'm going to give you a ballpark number, around twenty-five. I printed thirty-five papers, and I came back with a stack of them. Five houses on the extension on the back part, once you make the ninety there on the very back end, there were five houses on that, and then there were approximately about twenty houses on the.
The people that opposed it first time around before COVID hit were the people that were on the very end.
The dead end.
Yeah.
The reason why I ask, I kind of drove up there myself, and I do know for a fact a couple of people who opposed, because I happen to recognize them, I know why they opposed, when you go out of house and see the yards and.
Well, that's the good thing about this, fifty point oh one percent, we move forward, and the county cannot reject that at that point, because we've got a majority of residents in that area. And one thing I would say is, once we pass this resolution, we need to let the county know we're going back out and do it again.
Right, and this will give us the ability to go canvas and.
Yes.
Start that process, we have a roster of everybody in that area, that's, I'll get you that information. Do you need, well, to get to fifteen point five, we have to certify who's in that area and who signed the petition.
How many will need all that good stuff? Yep. All right, we had a motion, we had a second, and we had discussion, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries, no new business, no suggested ordinance issues, ordinance is a second reading, we don't have any finance committee report recommendations, Councilman Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. James, I'd like to request a motion for approval of payment of current invoices in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in one second.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries.
I'd like to request a motion for approval of twenty-five hundred dollar donation to Star Club to be paid via opioid funds.
Second. Questions or discussion?
If y'all don't know what Star Club is, it is a phenomenal after-school program that they.
At-risk students.
Yeah, at-risk, they feed the kids a small snack, they work on homework with them, they do like the community gardens, so it's a community giving, educational aspect, nutrition aspect, and it means that I think if they're there till possible six-thirty, as late as six-thirty.
That's one of the front backs.
Yeah, that first back, so that means that the school buses actually transport them there and drop them off there, so the younger kids that may not have parental guidance at home, their parents can come pick them up there, so it also utilizes as somewhat as an after-school daycare.
Jack and Cecil.
Yeah.
Jack and Cecil, so, and, you know, people, why opioid funds, well, because if we don't do something with these kids right now, Chief Bass and Chief Conley going to have to deal with them down the road.
Great program.
And I think it's amps of prevention is better than a pound of cure.
Worth pounds of cure.
Yep, well, better, worth, you're right, ground reclusive. All right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries.
I'd like to request a motion for approval of five thousand dollars to Hezekiah House to be paid via opioid funds.
Second. Questions or discussion?
What is that, what?
Hezekiah House is, was opened by Pastor Pope from St. Paul Baptist and Father Pat's brother at St. Francis, and they're very legitimate, do a good job of dealing with, and they limit what they bring into their house when it's not overcrowded, I think they, it's six to eight or something, I believe they bring in at one time. I've toured the facility, very nice, they redid everything, so, again, we're trying to attack the problem that we have and alleviate it some whatsoever, and if we can get one or two off, I mean, that's a great thing. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay, motion carries.
I'd like to request a motion to award a bid to the striping company in the amount of thirty-three thousand, five hundred and five dollars for resurfacing the tennis courts and construction of pickleball courts, be paid from light item four-four-one dash four-five-nine.
Second. Questions or discussion?
Is there a projected start date?
As soon as, I'll call in tonight, when we get out of here, if it's approved, they'll get started this week or something.
I read a few of them, is this to people from Florida?
No, this is local.
Local.
Yeah, the striping company. Brian, what's his last name? Can't remember, I got it in my phone, but they stripe our parking lots, they've done some work force, in fact, they've done.
I drive a game, I hate to do football field, but he did that, I do one, though.
Oh. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries.
And last, I'd like to request, I'd like to request a motion for approval to seek sealed bids for boot lifts for the Parks Department.
Second. Boy, you killing me.
This is going to save us money first year.
I know that. Who seconded that? Councilman Rucker did. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Letters and reports, Councilman Knight, do you have anything?
Yes, well, we have the Dragon Palooza on Saturday from four to eight, and the Esquire sang along, was a big success with over four hundred people, and the Jimmy Buffett tribute is set for September the thirteenth at six P.M. And the Haunted Trail will have a meeting at six P.M. next Monday at City Park, anybody interested in joining on the Haunted Trail Committee Group, whatever.
Thank you, sir. Hey, one thing I want to say, Snyder, Jim Snyder and Marcel, the West Virgin municipal league at, not this year's, but last year's annual conference hired them to do a Jimmy Buffett.
They're phenomenal.
They are, they're fantastic.
They really are phenomenal.
They do a great job, so, tell people about it, let them know, get it out on social media.
Jimmy Buffett, six P.M.
Can I come here to roadside?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Councilman Rowe, you got anything for Public Works? All right, any other letters or reports?
I have one, just short, just to give everybody an update on the ordinance committee, what's going on there, we have sent two proposed, I don't call them proposed ordinances yet, but two topics to public where to, I'm sorry, PMZ, that has to go through PMZ, Marshall's aware, has to look going through the proper channels there. We have about four or five ordinances, proposed ordinances that we have passed. Our city attorney's been a little busy the last few weeks on a trial, I've been out of town, so I wanted to talk to him this week, get those finalized, and hopefully be on next meeting's agenda.
I got a question, the clutter ordinance, are we making it tougher or softer?
That was going to be discussed tonight, but due to Marshall being on vacation, we were going to move it to a next meeting, because there was a few of the council members had questions regarding that. This was something that Marshall had proposed, and there was questions, at our last meeting, he wasn't available due to picking his son up, and then so we were moving, like I said, to the night, but he's on vacation, so.
I mean, in your opinion, is it tougher or softer?
Without knowing what, if there's going to be any changes to what his thing is, I would say it's probably tougher.
Good.
But, I can't speak if there's going to be, once we get it, and I'll sit down and look at it, there may be, I know there's some questions on enforceability and things of that nature, that we need him as, you know, as the expert in that field to answer for us, so.
We get Terry Rucker, sick in the morning.
Yeah.
Terry does a great job, and Marshall does a great job, Paul, all of them do a great job.
I think, if I could, Councilman Page, at the moment, I think like, part of what helps in that answer there, some of it, like, for example, allowing swing sets, we should probably do that.
Yes.
We might relinquish some idea of not allowing.
Well, that's, that's, well, that's in a different one, that's in one of ones went to.
Yeah, swing sets in the front yard.
Trampolines.
And stuff, trampolines, I'm torn, but.
I think the update is the thing.
Correct.
Might go both ways, but.
Derek, what's your opinion on that? Are you the representative tonight?
No, not that person.
Yes, you are.
I do want to give her a shout-out, though, she helped me tremendously getting this Pota stuff, I had to take a couple of days off work to get all the bureaucracy paperwork done, I did it myself for the businesses, and I couldn't have gotten it done without her, so I want to publicly thank you for all your help.
Derek, way to go, girl.
One day I did something.
All right, any other letters or reports? I have no appointments, announcements, Public Works Committee, Wednesday, September third at eight A.M. at the City Garage, Parks Committee, Thursday, September fourth at six P.M. at the Hanford Center, Finance Committee, Monday, September eighth at four-thirty P.M. in the MUC conference room, City Council, Monday, September fifteenth at six-thirty P.M. in the council chambers. September nineteenth, we're having another Pota event up on Old Main, we're just going to close from Second Street down to B Street, and we got Chris Sutton's band Soul Mountain playing, and so it will be closed down probably around five o'clock or five-thirty, so there shouldn't be a lot of complaining by a couple of businesses, but everybody benefited from the last Pota in a big, big way, I promise you that. I was in and out of all the businesses at Mount New Main Street, and they did a, they were packed, every one of them was, yes, sir.
You reminded me with festival, if anybody, city departments or anybody out, if chili cook-off on October fourth, anybody still accepting chili cookers, love for people to come out and compete, we're kind of challenging any first responders in the area. We want to have as many first responders from all across towns, county, whatever, and kind of have a bragging rights for which first responders have the best chili, so sending a challenge out to the first responders countywide, over to Putnam County as well, come on down.
Come on down, on February fourth.
I'm thinking about entering myself and my chili, but it wouldn't be fair to everybody else. Wouldn't be everybody, it wouldn't be fair to everybody else.
Ford is completely blind. The judges have no clue who's chili they are tasting. Like, it, it's completely anonymous. All they know is chili contestant number one. They don't know who that contestant is, so come on down.
That's, got a little fire, but a little sweetness to it, too.
Bobby, I think your brother-in-law should, uh, make some chili and enter in that.
One's gone.
Hey, Bobby, he's. You know. Uh, all right, any other announcements? All right, it's now time for public forum. Any resident wishing to address council? They step up to the podium, give you name, your address, you got five minutes, speak your piece. Herb, you got anything?
No.
Not tonight? Okay. All right, with no, uh, apparent public forum, uh, we'll entertain a motion for a jury.
Welcome to the jury.
Second.
All in favor, say bye.
Bye.